...place elsewhere in the Middle Belt. To give one recent example, Catholic priest Father George Dogo told the outlet Truth Nigeria, who is directed by, which is directed by a former State Department official Douglas Burton, that 10 days ago in Taraba, 11, sorry, Fulani militants stormed through a local government area indiscriminately killing 20 people and burning and damaging homes and churches. A survivor, Christiana Joseph, a 33-year-old farmer from Amadu Village, told Truth Nigeria that as she was preparing to go to early morning mass, a Fulani militia arrived on motorcycles and shot into her house. She is quoted stating, "They fired for about five minutes shouting Allah Akbar. When the gunfire stopped, I went inside and found my husband of 14 years, John Joseph, already dead." Survivor Sampson Haruna also stated that attackers on motorcycles with AK assault rifles strafed houses in his neighboring village. He said, "My neighbors, David Bawa and Titus Gregory, lost five family members between them. My house was riddled with bullets." According to the Truth Nigeria report on this Taraba attack, quote, "The Fulani militants that attacked were led by Warlord Al-Haji Tukor," according to community leader Usa. Wakori Diocese Bishop Mark Nzuquen called the crisis overwhelming and said that 335 Catholic churches have been destroyed and more than 300,000 Catholics there have been displaced beginning in 2015. That's just in his diocese. According to the head of a local security consultancy, Fulani militants planned and staged their attacks from an abandoned resort now overgrown with vegetation called Danjuma Farm that the Fulani use as a cover for cattle grazing, he said. That's the head of this security agency. But that's just a smokescreen. And he commented that if the government wants to stop the attacks, they must clear out the terrorists from Danjuma Farms. In daily Post Nigeria article, Reverend John Lekel, the director of social communications for the Wakori Diocese, that's the same diocese that we're talking, I've been talking about, described the situation as devastating, revealing that many rural parishes have been abandoned following sustained assaults that have claimed multiple lives and destroyed entire villages. Bishop Nzuquen told the respected ACI Africa outlet last year that, quote, "If peace is restored, the region's rich agricultural landscape could provide a prosperous future for its residents." Instead, he said, "There is food scarcity because of these constant attacks." And there are constant, countless reports like this across the Middle Belt. I mention this one because it shows that Abuja has failed to act even when the Fulani aggressors are identified and their base from which they launch repeated attacks are known. This represents not only a horrifying pattern of severe persecution by Fulanis targeting largely Christian areas, but also a shocking pattern of government tolerance of this persecution. I want to give one last example from Plateau State that occurred a month ago. The Reverend Ezekiel Dechomo of Plateau, who is the regional chairman of the Church of Christ in Nations, told journalists in Joss on October 24 that Islamist extremists have threatened to murder him from calling on the Nigerian and US governments to help protect Christians against genocide. He told the Christian outlet Morningstar News, quote, "My life is in grave danger. Even as I speak, I am on the lookout for attacks. I no longer sleep with my eyes closed. I have been attacked before but escaped." The threats came after he appeared in a video on October 15, standing in a mass grave containing the remains of a dozen slain church members reportedly killed by Fulani herders. And Mr. Chairman, there have been hundreds of priests and pastors killed in the last 15 years targeted, not as the State Department reports that they've, that they were walking alone or unguarded on a road at night, but they've been attacked and killed in their rectories, homes, and inside their churches. As the Nigeria government issues denials and watches passively with no Fulanis prosecuted and no Nigerian forces prepared to defend the vulnerable, the Christian death toll from Fulani militia attacks alone, leaving aside the terror attacks from Boko Haram and ISWAP and the others, is in the thousands and Christian survivors in displacement camps number in the millions. The respected research group Open Doors cites Nigeria as now the world's most dangerous country for Christians because of their religion. Again, at this time, most Nigerian Christians are being murdered by Fulani militias and they are the militia's special target. Aid to the Church in Need reported last month, quote, and this is the Pontifical Foundation that says this, "Nigerian Christians in the Middle Belt are bearing the brunt of violent attacks from those identified as Fulani militants." Some insist that the violent aggression by the Fulani herders against the Christian farmers on their own land is the unavoidable result of climate change. The State Department Religious Freedom Reports have annually described these indiscriminate mass killings as clashes between two socioeconomic groups who fight over scarce resources brought on by climate change. Religion has nothing to do with it, they claim. This justification of Fulani violence has recently shifted. Now it is generally acknowledged that Christians are being murdered in cold blood, but is being argued that more Muslims are killed in the violence, and this proves it has nothing to do with religion, they say. This argument is not factual and it is irrelevant for CPC. The premise that more Muslims than Christians are killed is debatable, as the Scholarly Observatory for Religious Freedom in Africa documents. In any case, most Nigerian Muslims live in the north where Boko Haram and a plethora of ISIS and al-Qaeda linked Islamic terrorist groups attack them and them and non-Muslims alike, and this violence too is religiously based. However, significant for CPC criteria, the Nigerian military is actively fighting those terrorist groups in the north. By contrast, in the Middle Belt, where most of the Christians are being killed in recent years and where Christians are the special target of Fulani herder militias, the government isn't lifting a finger against the Fulani militants. Instead, it is tolerating them and denying it is happening. I have also heard about sporadic Christian attacks on Muslim villages. To the extent that the government is not taking action in those cases, that is further reason for CPC designation. Political momentum to list Nigeria among the world's worst persecutors gained throughout October as the annual CPC reviewed near the year-end deadline and reports of massacres kept coming. On October 21, the Pontifical Foundation Aid to the Church in Need issued its world survey that reported, quote, "The number and ferocity of the attacks on Christian villages in the Middle Belt have led some experts to conclude that these incursions are a deliberate land grab to remove Christians and Islamize the region," end of quote. Various high-level White House officials in the State Department were also hearing from groups of religious freedom activists on Nigeria. Later that week, President Trump made the CPC designation. For the first time, the issue of Fulani militias targeting Christians for mass murder received official US acknowledgement when Secretary Rubio addressed this. This in turn got the attention of Nigeria's President Tinubu, who said he is willing to work with US. Until now, he has not shown the political will to stop this Fulani violence. CPC, as you know, is a two-step process. The next step in this, in this process requires the president to adopt a policy response. And we heard today from the State Department about what is being considered. And there are several actions that I also endorse. One is to, it's been raised before by Representative Moore, and it's my first recommendation, disarm Fulani herders. These militias are loosely organized. They don't have explosives or drones, don't use tunnels, suicide vests, or propaganda films. They, they are an unsophisticated, but nevertheless lethal force because they come armed with AK-47s and 49s while their targets have only homemade pipe bombs to defend, pipe, sorry, pipe guns to defend themselves with. Assault rifles such as those used by the Fulanis are heavily regulated by Nigeria's Firearms Act and illegal for the targeted Christian farming villages. They, the Act specifically only allows homemade Dane, what are called Dane guns, cap guns, and muzzle, another muzzle-loading guns. The Act thus outlaws the firearms that would match the assault rifle firepower of Fulani militias and leaves the peaceful Christian communities essentially defenseless. President Tinubu should order the removal of Fulani heavy weapons raiding their encampments at Danjuma Farm in Taraba and other places in the process. He should direct the powerful cattle breeders associations, such as the Mayetialo Cattle Breeders Association, to cooperate in doing this. Two, fortifying targeted areas. So US foreign aid in Nigeria in recent years has amounted to about $1 billion annually. Areas targeted by these Fulani militias should receive some of this aid to securely return home and reclaim their properties, rebuild and defend themselves. For, for example, this aid could, could go toward intelligence sharing, the training and equipping of local private security guards as well as other measures. Again, the Fulani militias are not the formidable foe seen in ISIS and al-Qaeda, and their attacks could be prevented relatively easily, prevented and defended against by these basic measures. Humanitarian aid is important, and this should be for the victims of Fulani herder militia attacks, and they should, and this should be distributed through trusted local providers, including through the churches on the ground that are currently one of the main aid providers to the survivors of these attacks. And it's, it's just, again, tragic and ironic that productive farmers now need food aid since they have been driven from their Middle Belt farms. Four, sanctions against those aiding, abetting, and granting impunity to the Fulani herder militias, including, those sanctions should include high-level officials in the criminal justice system and the military. The US should gather intelligence regarding official responses to the Fulani herder militias and review possible visa and Magnitsky sanctions for those aiding and abetting. The Fulani warlords' names are, are known or knowable. Out of all the, I think it's important to understand that out of all the violent attacks by Fulani herder militias, there have been only a few arrests. And one involved the prosecution of a Fulani herder who was convicted of destroying melons at a melon company who received a 10-year sentence. It shows the government can get tough when it wants to. And two, high-profile legal cases of violent attacks on Christians have seen movement in recent months. One concerns the Catholic Church of St. Francis in Ondo, where terrorists killed some 40 worshippers on Pentecost Sunday in 2022. Depositions are being taken in that case. Ondo's bishop recently told me, but the trial has not yet started. It's important to note that's not in the Middle Belt, it's in the South. The five suspects being held are said to be part of the East African Shabab terror group and are not members of the Fulani herder militia. The other case involves the Yalwata massacre itself, where charges are filed, have been filed against five Fulani herders in September in an extremely rare example prosecution that I believe is attributable to the pressure raised by the CPC debate in Washington. Finally, the, the International Religious Freedom Act calls, suggests as a possible policy response to CPC designation, a binding agreement with the country to prevent further violence. So I think that that is something that should be considered as well. And unfortunately, President Tinubu hasn't shown the political will so far to direct the police and military action within his power. And he argues that because the police force is centralized under the Constitution, he is overwhelmed. He says that a constitutional amendment is required to give back policing power to the governors of the state, and that could take years. However, right now, there exist legal ways he can shore up defenses within the targeted Christian areas. For example, decentralizing police commands internally or empowering local guards or deploying more mobile police units to states and prioritizing referrals of state governor police orders for presidential review. So I suggest that the US enter into a binding agreement with Nigeria to ensure this needed police protection against the Fulani militias. And since President Trump's CPC designation, I note some Nigerian officials, including generals of a force in the southern state of Ondo, who cite worries about securing Nigeria's wide-open border, already asked for US partnership in an effort to help, to quote, "Help flush out Fulani ethnic militia terrorists from the southwest." Thank you.
Ms. Smith, thank you so very much for that very well-thought-out testimony. I mean, you have so much in there, and I'll go back and read it to pull out much of what you have just conveyed to the committee. So thank you for that. And I'd like now recognize our next witness is Ana Bugu.
Thank you very much. Chairman Smith, Rankin Member Jacobs, distinguished members of the committee, I'm honored to share my views before this committee today. Just want to state that CSIS does not take policy positions, so the views represented in this testimony are my own and not those, not those of my employer. In this testimony, I would like to reinforce the recommendations that I made before this committee in March. In addition, I would like to reflect on how this tenuous moment in US-Nigeria relations provide an opportunity for both countries to work together to address the critical threats of jihadist violence and insecurity in Nigeria and to develop a more strategic partnership. The United States and Nigeria have a complicated bilateral relationship with shared interest in counterterrorism and economic development, but this relationship is often marked by periods of friction. Nigeria wields significant continental and regional influence but grapples with violent extremism and internal security. Nigeria's leadership in West Africa is crucial, and its ability to address its governance and security challenges will impact not only its future but the wider region. Nigeria's instability stems from a key shortcoming. Despite 64 years of independence, it has yet to establish a national identity grounded in basic freedoms and dignity. Currently, ethnicity, religion, and language rather than nationality define the identity of its diverse population. Understanding the violence in Nigeria requires looking beyond its apparent religious and ethnic motivations. For me, growing up in Joss Plateau State, I've witnessed the impacts of these ongoing conflicts on vibrant communities. In addition, coming from a family involved in Christian missionary work, I recognize the shared faith between Christian communities in Nigeria's Middle Belt and those in the US rooted in the history of American missionary efforts. However, a narrow narrative that reduces Nigeria's security situation to a single story and frames it solely as the persecution of Christians oversimplifies the issue. Religious and ethnic violence is driven more by governance failures and is worsened by hate speech and conspiracy theories rather than being just a singular conflict. Nigeria is facing multiple security crises due to religious extremism, banditry, criminality, resource competition, communal disputes, and separatist agitation. These issues are intertwined with history, poverty, and political contestation. The interplay between religion and politics in Nigeria is deep and complex. Leaders often romanticize the country's unity but fail to foster it, as we saw in the divisive 2023 elections. As Nigeria approaches another national election in 2027, religion will once again continue to influence candidate selection, voter behavior, and campaign strategies. The Trump administration's claims that Nigeria is permitting targeted killings of Christians distracts from the broader issue of extremist violence and insecurity in the country. Since returning to civilian rule in 1999, Nigeria has been a major recipient of US security assistance primarily aimed at counterterrorism. Despite this significant assistance, the extremist threat in Nigeria has worsened, expanding from the northeast where Boko Haram has waged a 15-year insurgency to the northwest where so-called bandits are raiding villages. Most victims in both of these regions are Muslims. Since Boko Haram's emergence in 2009, Nigerian administrations, including the administration of President Tinubu, have struggled to improve security, and many Nigerians across the country acknowledge that the situation has only worsened in recent years. Therefore, narratives focusing solely on the killing of Christians often overlook Nigeria's broader insecurity and the fact that religion is usually a secondary factor in the violence. Recent violence in the Middle Belt predominantly affects Christian farming communities from various ethnic groups. Victims are mostly believed to be killed by Fulani herders who are primarily Muslims, but the killings aren't explicitly motivated by religious reasons. While some community members actually describe the violence in their communities as genocidal, they often emphasize that the underlying causes are ethnic and material such as land grabs rather than unrelated religious differences alone. Nevertheless, the high level of insecurity across Nigeria has left many religious communities, including Christians, at risk. The failure to hold the perpetrators of these violent acts accountable has created both a sense of impunity among the attackers and a sense of grievance in the affected communities. Nigerian citizens have mixed reactions to the US redesignation of Nigeria as a country of particular concern. Many particular Christian groups welcome the attention, seeing it as a chance to push the Nigerian government to act against the violence. However, there are also concerns among many Nigerians, including Christians, that President, that President Trump's threats of military action could also exacerbate existing political tensions. Public opinion surveys overall in Nigeria indicate a public consensus on the seriousness of the security challenges in the country, with many Nigerians valuing their diverse communities and believing in shared national unity over divisions. Now allow me to offer some concrete recommendations. First, to the United States government, it's important to engage deeply and broadly with communities across Nigeria. The US can play a constructive role, but it must avoid selective intervention and address the concerns of all Nigerians across all religions to prevent worsening sectarian divisions. Two, it's important to rethink reactive, quick-win actions that may seem beneficial to Nigerians but could have larger and far-reaching negative impacts. If the Trump administration proceeds with unilateral military action in Nigeria, it could endanger the Christians it aims to protect and worsens divisions along religious lines. Third, prioritize security governance to help tackle the violence. The US should reassess its security cooperation with Nigeria, focusing on building a program that prioritizes security governance and ties military support to tangible reforms. This renewed partnership should extend beyond military aid to include intelligence sharing, rule of law, and governance. Four, support local actors that are advancing inclusive peace and conflict resolution. Supported moderate religious leaders and community networks in developing early warning systems can shift the focus from identity-based conflict to sustainable solutions. Five, work more with Nigeria's states and its growing city centers. The US government should decentralize its engagement with Nigeria by strengthening dialogue and support for receptive leaders at state and local levels, particularly in the Middle Belt, which is home to about 45 million people. The focus should be on local security to foster a safe environment for agriculture and manufacturing. This approach should integrate economic development with sustainable peace by addressing root causes of the conflict through economic revitalization, institutional reform, and business initiatives. Finally, for the US government, it is important to revive the US Congressional Bipartisan Caucus on Nigeria. The US relationship with Nigeria is a key strategic partnership in Africa. An active bipartisan congressional caucus will highlight this importance, foster discussions, and provide a platform for diverse perspectives to better inform legislative responses on various issues. Now, recommendations for the Nigerian government. It is important to appoint a Nigerian ambassador to the United States to improve its international engagement and manage narratives about its security realities. It's critical for President Tinubu to appoint a capable Nigerian ambassador to the US, as I also recommended in my testimony in March. Second, the Nigerian government needs to make accountability of both perpetrators and of the authorities central to the response. Nigerian citizens need justice. As criminality in the Middle Belt has increased due to impunity, the narrative of Christian genocide has gained traction because of years of mass killings without accountability, leaving many faith communities feeling abandoned. Third, Nigerian government needs to get serious about police reform. Nigeria's single-federalized police force struggles to address the country's complex security challenges. The Tinubu administration needs to accelerate initiatives to improve citizen security, including the recruitment of 30,000 new police personnel he approved in June. The military in Nigeria is overextended. Many of them are handling duties that should be handled by the police, and it's essential to think about how the country reassigns police officers that are currently providing personal security to wealthy elites to focus more on the serious crimes. Next, coordinate federal and state action and messaging. Effective coordination so desperately needed among Nigeria's federal and state governments is often undermined by finger pointing, and this must stop. Finally, for the Nigerian government, it's important to start laying the groundwork for peaceful elections in 2027. Nigeria must address the use of religion as a trigger for electoral violence. The new leadership in its election commission presents a chance to restore public trust in the electoral system, promote responsible political behavior, and strengthen security and judicial processes. The violence in Nigeria has resulted in significant loss of life. However, addressing the country's complex security issues solely in religious terms and focusing on one group of victims is counterproductive. A fresh approach is needed both for Nigeria and the United States. Nigeria must tackle its institutional weaknesses in security, justice, and conflict prevention to effectively end the violence and hold perpetrators accountable. The US should engage in open dialogue and cooperation, fostering a better understanding of Nigeria's complexities. Both countries can leverage current diplomatic tensions to strengthen their bilateral relationship and collaboratively address the wider threats of jihadist violence in Nigeria and the surrounding West Africa and Sahel region as both nations have vital interests at stake. Thank you again for inviting me to testify, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you so very much for your testimony. We do have a video I'd like to show. This is of Ms., Mrs. Akpen, a survivor of the Yalwata massacre. She lost five of her children, the baby in her hands is her one remaining child, but she, and so many others who were slaughtered that day, her family. We hear from them, we hear from her, the priest in the picture, that the horror is, the PTSD from that is just unthinkable. And so I just want to, it's a very short but very powerful video.
Good afternoon, good evening. It depends on where you're watching us from. I am Reverend Father Philip Apo, the coordinator of the Foundation for Justice Development and Peace, FJDP, of the Catholic Diocese of Makodi, Benue State, here in Nigeria. I am here with one of the survivors of the Yalwata massacre of 13th of June 2025 here in Nigeria, where we lost over 200 lives in a single night. So she is here to be witness as one of the survivors of that grave attack. So we'll listen to her. That her name is Ms. Shima Akwen. That when they went into sleep that fateful night, around 9:00 p.m., the Fulani terrorists attacked them where they were sleeping. That they were locked inside a camp at Yalwata, and they were butchering them with cutlasses and shooting guns as well. When they thought all had finished at some point in time, they pulled petrol on the building, and the most of the majority of them were set ablaze. That in the course of this action, she saw a tree up when she lifted off her eyes, and she raised her hands, head on the tree, climbed up where she was able to hit herself. That her five children that she left below were crying, and in her presence, they were being slaughtered by the terrorists. That she ran out into the bush at some point, and those who came for rescue would now bring her out of that place at some point, and she was able to witness the whole drama. And when the people came, they were now relocated to a new camp. So thank you very much. This is the much we can receive from Ms. Shima Akwen. God bless you.
Thank you very much, and we now go to questions. Let me just ask, on one of my trips to Nigeria, I did visit the Fusion Center, which there was a great deal of cooperation beginning. And I mentioned that our ambassador, Mike Walsh, to the United Nations, was actually deployed there as a Green Beret and part of a special forces training component. There was a great hesitancy on the part of our government to engage that to the degree that would really make a difference. And I'll tell you what they told me. They said that they were worried about applying the Leahy Law so that we do not fund or train human rights violators. So believing that, I actually asked, I had a hearing, and Ed Royce did a hearing on the full committee, and we asked the undersecretary of state under the Obama administration, who, how many Nigerians could be trained? And she said matter-of-factly, half. We don't need half, but a large number, half would be, that could be trained in counterinsurgency. They wanted night vision goggles, they wanted intel to track down, you know, Boko Haram and these other then emerging groups, ISIS West Africa, for example. And it never really materialized the way it could have. Now, one of the hopes I have, and we hope many of us have coming out of this, will be that there will be a renewed effort to, again, support human rights-trained people, men and women who are not accused. Certainly, that is a very difficult thing to prove one way or the other. The Leahy Law is very hard to implement. And I sat through an actual session with a Foreign Service officer in Abuja as he went through names and just to get a sense of how robust the effort is. Very, very hard to do. But again, so many can be trained, and I think what we are hoping will come out of this, in addition to a whole lot of other things, is a very highly-trained counterinsurgency force that will take it to Boko Haram, the Fulani terrorists, and others. I note that just today, there's a report that just came out that the president is not going to a G20 meeting, and he's deploying additional people to a place where there were killings in Kawara. And I hope they're realizing, we're not kidding in the United States. The President of the United States is absolutely committed to this, Marco Rubio is as well, and right on down. And what are we doing? We want to help, as I said earlier, those who are at risk, those who are dying, those like that wonderful woman we just saw a moment ago who lost five of her children. We don't want that to happen anymore. And, you know, I do believe that the art of the possible, when you have a will, when you have a focus, you can have great achievements for peace, and that's the hope here. So my, you know, last night, and I know that my colleagues also had meetings with this high-level delegation, and ours went for almost two hours, and I said, think of us as partners. You know, yes, we do have the ability to levy sanctions, and you may not like it, but we're doing it because we care about the people in your country that are being slaughtered, both Christians and Muslims. So I, your thoughts on really getting this cooperation off the ground? When I was there, I talked to a lot of people, and I followed up once I got here, and they had all these recommendations, only a few, if any, were ever carried forward with, and that's unfortunate, some were. But I think a top-to-bottom review of what can be done, what does it take? And then meanwhile, on the humanitarian side, and we asked this last night, and Mr. Ozenga asked this as well, of our two witnesses from the administration, you know, the government really needs to do more for its IDPs. It has not. But we want to be helpful there too, you know, making sure that food, medicine, shelter is available to them. So the IDP camps that I've been in were awful. One was an old hotel that was just, you know, makeshift turned into an IDP, and that was probably one of the better ones. So your thoughts on that, on really helping Nigeria to help themselves?
Well, I think that that is important. That's the way to get this, to tackle this problem once and for all. And I think that President Trump has instilled at least some political will on behalf of the government to, within the government of Nigeria, to take some action. And it's absolutely essential to do this, both because religious freedom is a pillar of U.S. foreign policy. It's in compliance with the International Religious Freedom Act, which requires the president to review every foreign country to decide whether or not to designate it as a CPC annually, and the year is ending, so it was appropriate that President Trump do that again. It's going to help alleviate just unfathomable human suffering, as we've seen in that mother's eyes today, to halt Nigeria's descent into failed state status or an invert possible civil war, and to not deepen the spread of terror across Western Africa. It's absolutely essential that Nigeria's government start engaging in the security of its own people. And again, there has been some willingness, political will, to fight the terror groups in the north, but there hasn't been any prosecution, so far successful prosecution, of any one from the Fulani militias at all. So I think that that's...
Just saying that again for emphasis, there has not been with the Fulani militias efforts to.
Yeah, so there hasn't been, and then that is, I think, more of a police work, and, you know, warfare is very different now. There's, human intelligence is getting rare and rare. There's, you know, drone intelligence and other forms of technological methods. But I think that it's actually a relatively easy problem to solve relatively, and it should start with that and simultaneously, actually, work on the, and help, you know, locate Leah Sharibo, you mentioned, and then Chibok's schoolgirls that are still enslaved. You mentioned, Mr. Chairman, that there was intelligence sharing in the past, but nothing happened. I think that was a prime case of that, and that should be pursued and can be pursued, again, fairly easily with modern technology. And it should happen across the country, including in the north. There should be cooperation and work on the terror groups and sealing the border and sharing our experience with that. President Trump's been very good with that, and we have a lot to impart, and if the government of Nigeria is willing, I think it would benefit all of us in the region.
Thank you very much. I think, you know, consecutive U.S. administrations have defined or described the relationship with Nigeria as one of its most important on the continent. And even though that relationship has been complicated with, you know, periods of friction, I think this moment that we find ourselves in seems as if all things have aligned, and there is an opportunity now for both the U.S. and Nigeria to come to the table to reset that relationship, especially given the fact that citizens across the board in Nigeria, every data point you look at, there's overwhelming acknowledgement that the levels of insecurity in the country are unacceptable. I think the fact that we have this coming from Nigerian citizens provides the opportunity to have real, serious conversation based on concrete benchmarks for progress. The mistake that would be made is if it is seen as being a selective intervention favoring one group over the other. So there is an opportunity for Nigeria and the U.S. to reset its relationship, one that would really be based on listening to the Nigerian people. And Nigerians are saying levels of insecurity are very high. How do we address it? So this opportunity now provides leverage to the U.S. working with the Nigerian government to actually show some very clear progress.
Okay, thank you very much. I would point out, and this is worth noting, because I was always perplexed with Secretary Blinken, and I asked him at hearings just like this, why he withdrew CPC, and I never got a good answer. But when we were doing the International Religious Freedom Act of 1998, I held all the hearings, most of them in this room. And John Schadick, who was the Assistant Secretary for Democracy, Human Rights, and Labor, testified against it for the Clinton administration. On the record, I have all the records, you could go look at it. He said it would create a hierarchy of human rights, which is nonsense, and I even, in my response to him at one of the hearings, was to say, okay, I was all for combating apartheid, which was not a very popular thing within my party in the very beginning of the Reagan administration, and I was all for it. Did that take away any other human rights work we were doing? It was not in lieu of, it was in addition to what we were doing in any other area of human rights work. And I said the same thing about religious freedom. It is a pillar of our constitution, it's a pillar of our, it's really a universally-recognized human right. And they said it would, that one year later, I had a hearing on, did it do that? And I had the CPC, the ambassador-at-large, Religious Freedom testify, because they were all saying, Schadick especially, it would make everything worse on religious freedom. And the word back was, even after one year, it was seriously advancing religious freedom. Ditto on trafficking. I was told by Harold Ko, the Assistant Secretary for Democracy, Human Rights, and Labor, right from where we're sitting right now, that most of what was in my Trafficking Victories Protection Act of 2000 would be counterproductive. We don't need a tip office, we don't need, we don't need all of the dozens of new programs that were unleashed by that law. And it was a bipartisan law, Sam Gajson, who sat right here with me, it was my bill, but he was our principal co-sponsor, and we really worked together to get it passed. And he was from Connecticut. And again, as we went over year and year after that, it was like, yeah, it really did help. But it was stopped in its tracks had we listened to that argument. Blinken was a part of that on the religious freedom back then, and I always felt, I could be wrong, that there was a sense that the Religious Freedom Act was not something he was terribly enamored of, so it was very easy to get rid of the CPC status for him, because he did not give a good answer when asked directly by me, and I wasn't the only one, where you sit, Nina, why? What's the why of it? And at one point, he told the appropriators that there's no, none of this has anything to do with religious freedom, you know, in terms of the violence. Really, it just doesn't pass a straight-faced test. So I, you know, that's, in my humble opinion, one of the reasons why we had such, again, and I remind everybody, it was Clinton who signed the International Religious Freedom Act. So, and we didn't know if he was going to do it. At the very end, we did have veto-proof majorities to overcome a veto. But that said, he did sign it, and I'm forever grateful for that. Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Onambogu, thank you for testifying again before the committee today. As you know, President Trump, in his November 1st Truth Social post on Nigeria, threatened to deploy the U.S. military guns blazing into Nigeria to completely wipe out the Islamic terrorists there, stating that if we attack fast, if we attack, it will be fast, vicious, and sweet. Oh, those are quotes. Do you believe unilateral U.S. military strikes in Nigeria would make the situation more or less safe for Nigerian citizens?
I believe it will make it less safe.
Can you elaborate on why?
Because all the data points show us that Nigerians value diverse societies. But even as they value diverse societies, there are also experiences where overwhelmingly there are low levels of trust. Already, just from the threats that have been made, we are already seeing, especially if you go on social media, people basically forming camps and basically coming up with different conspiracy theories about what is feeding the threats that have been made by the president. So I think it's important to understand the complexities of Nigeria and understand how fragile things are in the environment, and that for years, you've actually had members of the political class that have actually manipulated that public mistrust to gain power. So at this point, you hear people forming different camps and making different statements and building different conspiracy theories. I think overwhelmingly Nigerians value unity, and the conversations that are happening now are not good for Nigeria's social cohesion.
Thank you, and I do want to dig a little bit more into that, because it's not just the actual military strikes that would cause problems, but we've actually already seen that even just these threats and rhetoric have had immediate consequences. I've personally heard anecdotes of this happening already in Nigeria. You mentioned it in your opening statement that this was a risk. Could you expand on this and explain how inflammatory rhetoric can make tensions within communities even worse and actually lead to the very violence and targeting that this administration says it's trying to counter?
So as I mentioned, because of the low levels of trust that we see in communities, all we have to do is date back to several conflicts that have occurred over time in different parts of Nigeria, and we've seen how some of them have been driven by conspiracy theories or hearsays. And in many ways, rhetoric like this could actually be detrimental, because it moves us farther away from finding a real solution to the problem. All we have to do is just look at over the last few weeks since the threats were made and to just listen to all the different conversations and discussions happening. None of them have actually come out with real solutions from the side of the Nigerian government or from civil society or the international community. Everyone is all focused on what has been said. So it moves us farther from finding solutions, and especially in environments like those in the Middle Belt, where we've seen protracted conflicts. Time and time again, as you engage in these communities, you realize that while people live together, there are very low levels of trust, and it's extremely important that we keep that in mind, because very little things can inflame tensions that already exist in the country.
Thank you. You've talked a lot about this deficit of trust, lack of trust, about the sort of crisis of governance in Nigeria. How should Nigeria fix this problem, and how should the United States work with Nigeria to address it? Like, what would you advocate as the type of diplomatic actions and U.S. investments that would make sense here?
I think most importantly, for this situation, Nigeria needs to... I think most importantly, for this situation, Nigeria needs to take the lead and literally summon the utmost political will in this regard. As I mentioned in my testimony, a lot of these narratives have continued, because people, Nigerians are not getting the justice that they deserve. And unfortunately, it's breeding an environment where there's a sense of impunity, where those who carry out attacks, regardless of what religion they come from, they feel they can continue those attacks. And then the communities, there's a sense of grievance, where at the end of the day, if they feel that the government isn't coming to their aid, they come up with their own narratives. So at the end of the day, there needs to be an acknowledgement on the part of the Nigerian government. Nigeria needs to take the lead. Nigerian leaders need to summon the political will and work with their allies and, work with their allies and partners, such as the United States, to be able to address this, this violence. You know, at the end of the day, we may pull out numbers there and talk about the, the numbers of victims, but it's important for us to put a face to these numbers. The violence has gone on for so long in Nigeria. So Nigeria needs to take the lead, work in partnership with allies such as the U.S. And there is a moment here, there is an opportunity here for folks to come to the table to really find a sustainable solution to this problem.
Thank you. I yield back.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you very much. And Ms. Shea, appreciate you highlighting the issue of the disarmament of Falani militants. I think that certainly would be one of these solutions. Obviously, there's not a singular one, it's a multifaceted problem that's going on here in different regions of the country, and there's a lot of complexities to it. But as we've heard, I think, a couple times here, and I do agree with, there is an opportunity here for the Nigerian government to strengthen, deepen, and broaden their relationship with the United States, if they will do that in coordination and, in coordination and cooperation with the United States government. When I met with the delegation, as Mr. Smith met with them as well, that was one of the messages that I gave to them, is that there is an opportunity here, but you're going to have to take that opportunity. And I, I am very hopeful that they will do that, because myself and Chairman Smith and President Trump, we've had enough of this. This cannot continue to go on in the manner that it has, and it now has the president's attention. And I, I do agree that, you know, you get all this kind of information flying around out here that many times is not helpful. I, I recently saw the Foreign Minister was in some interview, I think it was Piers Morgan, and it was the same thing when they came here and some of us spoke to them, just disputing these numbers, right? I think the Foreign Minister said in the last five years, there's only 177 Christians have been killed. I, I don't think there's anybody believes that, right? And I don't think that it's necessarily constructive on their part to try to downplay what's happening here. But Ms. Shea, I'd ask you, how do you think about the differences, though, in between some of these statistics that have been reported, obviously, of non-governmental organizations that it seems to me have robust on-the-ground informational networks and, and those offered by the Nigerian government? How do we have such a, a huge disparity in the numbers in between what we're saying or what some of these groups on the ground are saying, and then the Foreign Minister saying there's 177 Christians killed in the entire country of Nigeria over the last five years? That which is just hard to believe. It seems that number was achieved likely in just the last couple months, but please.
Yes, you're right. It's a huge disparity, and assuming it's not just propaganda, one of the reasons why there is a range of numbers for any particular event is that precisely because the government doesn't do any police work. So there's no one that comes in to prevent it or to, during its occurrence, to stop it or in the immediate aftermath. So the witnesses have fled for their lives, there's chaos, there's destruction everywhere. The evidence has been tampered with or been deteriorated by the time people come along. It's very hard for the local pastors and priests, who are the ones there taking the body counts, helping the survivors, it's very difficult for them to do that job and at the same time do documentation. They do it as best as they can, but the numbers are far larger than that Foreign Minister is saying. I also want to say that I think that President Trump's designation of CPC has been extremely important. He has gotten the attention of the government of Nigeria. There is, we've heard that there's a high-level delegation in Washington today discussing this with the United States.
I met with him yesterday.
Yeah, so, so I think that this has very, been a very beneficial exercise thus far. We'll see how it plays out.
Yeah, I think you're right on that. And we've heard several people mention early warning systems, and I do agree with that. I, I think that those can be helpful. But I do want to highlight a case that just happened recently in the Plateau State. We had a pastor there who had warned the Nigerian government and said, we are under imminent threat, we're going to face an attack. If you all don't send some forces here in the next 24 hours, we need help, please come here and help us. The Nigerian government not only ignored it, they literally put out a press release about it, calling it fake news and hyperbole and being overblown. Well, 13 people lost their lives the next day. 13 people murdered, Christians murdered. I don't know how much an early warning system is going to work if people aren't listening to warnings that are literally over the phone. I, I'm not sure. So I'd say to the Nigerian government, you're going to have to, and we keep using the term prioritize this, because it's certainly a priority, and I think many of us on this panel here today on this dais, but I just wanted to highlight that, because those are, that is the type of behavior that has to change, because, and to your point of people not trusting the government, how can you trust a government that doesn't even show up when you ask them to? How are you supposed to trust your life with something like that? You can't. Obviously, you can't. And I think that's why it's incumbent upon the Nigerian government to work with us in coordination and cooperation to address these issues. Obviously, there's going to be some type of bifurcated approach to this. The Falani Islamic militant issue in the middle belt of the country is distinctly different from what you faced with Boko Haram and ISIS in the northeast of the country, and that's probably more of a question of kinetic military options rather than some of the other things that maybe State Department could do more in the middle belt, backed up by some of those same type of, at least, military deterrence options in that part of the country. But I, I think it does need to be a kind of whole government approach to this, but we, we have to have the Nigerian government as a, as a willing partner in all of this, because the president is, as Chairman Smith just said, extremely serious about this. I'm extremely serious about this. I, I'm, I stay up at night, it's hard to sleep sometimes thinking about this, and I pray about it every single night, just thinking about, you know, my own brothers and sisters in Christ in that country just getting murdered for the profession of their faith, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. So it's, it is absolutely heartbreaking. But I do want to thank the chairman again for convening this hearing, as he has over the many years and been working to advocate for people of Nigeria. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yield back.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore, and thank you for your leadership. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for your leadership. To Mr. Onugbo, what do you see as the primary drivers of religious freedom violations in Nigeria? And secondly, what are the political, economic, social, and historical factors that exacerbate the situation?
Thank you, Congressman. I, I really think it's a mix of factors here that we're looking at, a mix of factors here. And as I mentioned in my testimony, at a core of this are failures of governance. There needs to be an opportunity to address the governance deficits that we see across the board in Nigeria at every level. And I think sometimes when we look at this issue, it's also important, because we haven't been able to take a look at it from a, from a whole of government, from a holistic point of view, it's important for us to understand what are the areas that really encompass more institutional weaknesses, and then what are the areas that are plainly just a lack of political will? And so I think, again, as I had mentioned earlier in my earlier response, there is an opportunity here to actually begin to identify what are the areas, what are the institutional weaknesses that exist within the Nigerian system that allow or enable the environment for the violation of religious freedoms? And then what are the instances where it's just plain old lack of political will? Once we're able to do that, then you'll be able to identify a proper solution to a problem. Right now, we haven't been able to identify a proper solution. And this is why these conflicts are protracted, and they've continued time and time again.
Well, thank you so much. It's also very peculiar. I'd like for it to be noted in the record as we look forward to the great works of the continent and Africa. It marches and rises towards 2050, where 25% of the world's population will be of African descent. And this country, the United States, seems to talk down to African people historically. I would say that the United States is a very generous nation, and in some ways, the most generous nation, but has the most peculiar cruelty towards the African continent. And it must be confronted about its legacy. The second thing is, we are right now in a hostile environment with the Republic of South Africa and Nigeria, the nation's two most populous countries, if you will, or certainly two most prosperous countries that should be dealt with. I have another question for you. Based on your experience, which, which types of U.S. government programs or initiatives have been past or present, have been most effective in promoting religious freedom and interfaith dialogue in Nigeria?
Thank you very much for that question. And for several years, I actually worked specifically in the middle belt on these types of community security initiatives. And we've seen local-level peace-building initiatives where communities have been able to, and most importantly, as a community-led, led by the communities, they've been able to put in place early warning systems. And beyond those early warning systems, moving a step further to ensure early response. Because, as has already been pointed out, it's of no use if people are able to raise an alarm and no response comes through. So over the years, we've seen some successful low-level peace-building programs across the middle belt, community-led peace-building programs. We've also seen programs that have included religious leaders from both faiths, particularly in places like Kaduna, in Adamawa, in Benue, in Plateau State. We've seen interfaith mediation councils where Muslims and Christian leaders have been able to come together to work closely with their communities. Those types of initiatives we've seen have been very successful.
Last question I would have for you. In its effort to dismantle the USAID program, the Trump administration terminated a USAID program called Partner that supported peace-building efforts to northern and north-central Nigeria. The $2 million project helped to strengthen the country's early warning and security response systems and provide training for local leaders, including religious leaders, on conflict mitigation strategies. This project, amongst others, like it helped to provide local leaders with mechanisms to alert law enforcement to possible conflicts before it happens. Partner also helped facilitate communications between farmer and herder, community leaders, often individuals from different religious backgrounds, in an attempt to bridge the gap between the two groups. Ms. Onugbo, what are some of these early warning signs of conflict? How would you describe the drivers of conflict in northern and central Nigeria? And to what extent do you assess these stem from religious and climate and resource competition?
As I said, the, the mix of these drivers, it's, it's a mix, and they're complex. And that's where I say, as you look at violence or as you look at a specific conflict, it's important to understand that there might be some conflicts, or there are conflicts that are specifically driven by religion. And there are some other conflicts that may have specific drivers. Where the challenge is now, or where the problem is, is when everything is lumped in together. You know, working for several years in the middle belt, when a conflict breaks out and people say, oh, it's a farmer-herder conflict, it's a farmer-herder conflict. Now, every type of conflict in the middle belt becomes a farmer-herder conflict. But we need to take the time and take the step to actually identify which of these conflicts are driven specifically because of disputes between farmers and herders, which of, and then which of these conflicts are just plain old criminality, as some of them are. And then which of those conflicts are actually driven because they are, people might be targeted because of their faith. And I think this is where we miss the point, when we do not acknowledge the complexities within Nigeria, when we use a single story to define the conflict. This is why we've not been able to find viable solutions. If we go back and, I believe, Ms. Shea, in the, in the previous panel, we spoke about the Chibok girls. This was an incident that happened in 2014, and just a week ago, we saw another group of, another group of schoolchildren kidnapped from their schools. Since 2014 till today, we've seen six different incidents of kidnapping. And we've had discussions in each and every one of them, but we've not been able to identify a viable solution, because we tend to oversimplify and we tend to generalize what the problems are. But for every conflict that happens in Nigeria, there are specific drivers, and we have to be able to take the time to identify what the root cause is of each specific conflict for us to be able to develop a sustainable solution.
And thank you so much for your testimony. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jackson. Mr. Stusman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you both for being here. Consecutive administrations here in the United States have viewed Nigeria as an important partner in West Africa. But I would say that our relationship has been less than perfect. Just last year, the Nigerian government wrongly detained Tigran Gambarian, a U.S. citizen and former IRS agent, for nine months on trumped-up charges of money laundering and tax evasion. Combining this with the Nigerians, the Nigerian government's woefully inadequate response to this violence, I'm concerned that they may not have our best interest at heart. And, and I'd like to, both of you to answer this. And Ms. Shea, maybe you can go first, but would you elaborate on the relationship between Nigeria and the United States? And do you think continued inaction on religious freedom issues will harm our relationship going forward? Does Nigeria want to have a civilized relationship with countries in the West and in Europe and other parts of the world?
Oh, thank you for your question. I think that Nigeria wants and needs the United States. And I think that many Nigerians have come to this country and continue to come to this country for education, for investment reasons, or to live. And they are among our most successful, if not the most successful immigrant group. So I think that they have a lot to gain, and they know that, from a relationship with the United States. I think, I'm encouraged that the Nigerian government has an extremely high-level delegation over here, talking to the Trump administration about how to improve relations.
So that the Nigerian people, for sure, is, is what it sounds like you're saying, want a relationship with the United States. What about the Nigerian government? I mean, to the extent that, you know, they're, they're giving us lip service on Christians being killed, I mean, do they have the ability to put a stop to the killings?
I think they have an ability to take action, which they have not done in the middle belt, where the Christians are the primary target. They're the special target in, of these militias. And the government has not lifted a finger to help them until now, and maybe not even now. But I think that the government... But I think that the government was not given any message before. I mean, we really, this is the first year that the, the first couple weeks that the government of the United States has said that there is a problem, that we are not happy, you know, we, our law, the International Religious Freedom Act, requires us to point them out and put them on the list of the world's worst persecutors of religious freedom, violators of religious freedom. So they have not gotten that message before. Before, they were told that their root cause is, that there's, these are two socioeconomic groups. There was no mention of religion. There was told, we were told, and the chairman, Smith, was told by Secretary Blinken and others, that this had nothing to do with religion. So now we're, we have a new analysis, and I think that we've had a very helpful response to that.
Ma'am, are we frenemies? Are we, what are we?
We're friends. And I'm sorry, I actually missed your original question. If you could repeat.
Yeah, I'm just asking, you know, could you elaborate on the relationship between Nigeria and the United States? And do you think that continued inaction on religious freedom issues will harm our relationship going forward? Does Nigeria, are they hearing the messages that are coming from our president, from the United States, about the concern of genocide? And not just, I mean, I realize there's people that are being killed that are both, you know, Christian and non-Christian, but that this sort of violence is just, cannot be tolerated.
Well, if they weren't hearing it before, they're definitely hearing it now. And I think, as I've mentioned before, there is an opportunity, and an opportunity that should not be missed in the way we convey as the U.S. how we want to work with Nigeria on this issue. The framing of the engagement really matters, and I think this is where we have to be, the U.S. has to be strategic in its partnership. The partnership with Nigeria, as you rightfully mentioned, is one of our most important partnerships on the continent. As was mentioned, by 2050, the population of Nigeria will surpass the population of the United States. So this is definitely a relationship that we have to keep and build, but approach our dialogues from a place of honesty. And I think what we have going now in this relationship is that the Nigerian people, there is a wide acknowledgement by the Nigerian people that something needs to be done and done quickly about the levels of insecurity in the country.
Do you think the Nigerian government is capable of putting a stop to the violence?
And then this is where I say that with the Nigerian government actually looking at where the inefficiencies lie or where the weaknesses are within its institutional capacity. And I think this is where, again, being able to differentiate what are institutional weaknesses and then what is just plain lack of political will.
Yeah.
And I think there needs to be an admittance of where the areas of weakness lie, and there are some clear areas of, of.
I agree, and I think they should, if they can't handle it, they should be willing to ask the international community for help. I mean, you know, we should all be standing for life, no matter where at in the world. Thank you. I yield back.
Thank you. As we close, I just want to make a point. The U.S. Commission on International Religious Freedom in their report says that Nigeria's government has continued to forcibly close camps hosting displaced Christians who fled violence by Boko Haram despite persistent security concerns in their communities of origin. That is a deep concern, and we're appealing to the country, to the government, I should say, of Nigeria, to rectify that. I also would point out that, you know, there's a, without objection, I would ask the, ask the House of Commons to send that a op-ed that's in National Review by Maureen Ferguson and Asaf Mahmood be included. The title is Nigerian Girls Are Being Kidnapped: Islamic Terrorists Have Inflected a Decade of Religiously Motivated Violence on Christian Women and Girls. I would note parenthetically that according to Amnesty International, April 2024, that over 1,700 children have been abducted since 2014, since the Chibok Girls Incident, 17 cases of mass abduction. But it's interesting that this piece that was written, this op-ed, and without objection, it'll be, it'll be part of the record, Maureen Ferguson was appointed to the commission by Mike Johnson, the speaker.